I'm gonna ask Councilman Jones if he will give us indication and then pledge of allegiance by Councilman Tipton, please. Do your stand.
Shelby Free, I would help the Father be come again tonight. Thank you for this day. We pray your blessing upon us tonight. We recognize you and realize you as God Almighty, all by yourself. He God that makes us may and is counsel tonight. In Jesus' name we thank you. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Is for councils or any amendments to the agenda by you guys or the administration?
I have one, but you can have to let me get it. Fine.
If it's okay, I'll go ahead and make my one amendment. I would like to remove from executive session the litigation item.
I'm gonna let Frank do first and then I'm gonna take off when he's putting on.
I was looking forward to it.
Item 9C to be added, proposal for grooming for ball fields, which was sent to you earlier and also on your desk.
And I'm gonna ask that we take that off and table it till the next meeting. We just got that information. And I don't know about all of you, but I work all day long and I have not had time to review all of that. There's a lot of questions I'd like to ask. And I haven't had time to formulate all that, just like I couldn't find it on the agenda. Because I just reviewed the agenda of the weekend. So, this will be my next request, as I've requested many times before. If we could get this agenda before noon on Fridays, it would be very nice if it was complete. Because I cannot stand to come in here or to get things added on Monday or Tuesday because I work full-time. And I do not have time to review it when stuff's getting added all the time, all the time. So, either I'm gonna vote no on it, or we can table it to the next time. And I think it's unfair to vote no on it.
So with that said, I will withdraw my amendment to the agenda.
That's 9B, right? 9C. Yeah, 9C. I'm sorry. All right. Anybody else? All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Is there anybody here to address council? It's an already on agenda. All right. Community recognitions or the mayor's use council? Is there anybody here tonight for the mayor's use council? Okay. Business spotlight this evening is courtyard at City Docks. Let us watch the video.
If you've had a chance lately to take a walk or a drive down to Pascagoula's beautiful waterfront, you've noticed the courtyards at City Dock are on the rise. The hard work of the city of Pascagoula and the redevelopment authority is paying off with two-thirds of section 1A pre-sold with three units remaining. This beautiful development is within walking distance to downtown area merchants and restaurants. And soon, construction will begin on nine more residential units. Ultimately, this mixed-use development will have both office and restaurant space once completed. Call our friends Kenneth Jones, Carleen Alfonso, and Walter Catchings at Caldwell Banker Alfonso Realty. And our hats off to the good folks at Elliott Homes for bringing this beautiful project out of the ground in downtown Pascagoula.
All right. Thank you. I encourage everybody to go down there and look at the progress they've made. It's starting to come up out of the ground. Looks real good. Next, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
As amended.
As amended.
So move.
Go up a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right. City manager?
The first item that I have for you tonight is 8A, discussion regarding selection of the city auditing services firm. You have in front of you, which we added today, it's 8A. And what it is, is right here. It's a resolution rejecting proposal of Wolf, Macduff, and Opie and authorizing recommendation by staff regarding a qualified firm to perform city auditing services. And just for the public's benefit and background, honor about October 16, 2018, the council authorized a city clerk to solicit requests for proposals for city auditing services. On December 21, which was the day in which they were due, we only received one proposal, which was from Wolf, Macduff, and Opie. It is staff's recommendation to reject Wolf, Macduff, and Opie's proposal and to allow staff to reach out to or to research and recommend a qualified firm, honor before the February 5, 2019, meeting, existing on the state auditor's approved CPA list. So, if y'all agree with staff's recommendation to reject, then I would ask that you pass item 8A, which is in front of you.
Do I have a motion to reject the proposal?
So move.
Go up a second. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to clarify with Ryan. So y'all researched it and as far as all the purchasing laws of Mississippi and everything, we're okay?
Yeah. Right. And we checked with this, actually, we checked with the state auditor, like everything that we've done here recently. But, and we have started to look into these, a handful of firms, and there is interest. And we're waiting to receive something back from them in short order.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The next item that you have before you is 8B, which is discussion regarding expansion of Ingles East Bank. As everyone here is aware, Ingles is about to ramp back up or have begun to do work on the East Bank. And here shortly, we will be issuing permits per Mr. Scruggs, whether it be through citizens of Pascagoula or other individuals. It has been brought to myself and Mr. Quarter's attention that certain individuals, or citizens primarily, would like for Ingles to come once these permits have been issued and do some sort of, I don't wanna say presentation, but let the public know exactly what is going to be done on the East Bank. So, we have informally reached out to them, but have not gotten a yes or no, one way or the other. It would be staff's recommendation based off the comments and requests that we have received, that the staff authorized, or I'm sorry, the council authorized the staff to make a request of Ingles to have them come to a council meeting and make a presentation of, or whatever it may be, to show the public of what they're doing on the East Bank once those permits have been issued. And if that's what y'all would like to do, I just need you to give us the green light.
I'd love to see them come here and explain to us what they're doing. Be great.
I agree.
Do they have a set interest, hourly, that they're gonna use, traveling through the city, and it's gonna be loose?
Market to Ingles.
Market to Ingles. I received calls from Old Mobile Highway, Ingles Avenue, 14th Street, that they're coming down to do that. Citizens are unhappy.
Yeah, I've asked them, I know staff has asked them, I personally asked them, to stay with Market and Ingles, because that's the original path. That's where we paved. That's why we're gonna fix that area. And that keeps those trucks out of all these neighborhoods. Now, sometimes, I had a discussion with a couple of them that I found in neighborhoods. But sometimes, that's not really Ingles folks, because the one I stopped wasn't working for the Ingles. But stop him anyway.
So, if that's what you would like to do, then I would need a motion to authorize myself or the mayor to issue a invitation for them to come.
So. For a motion?
So move.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And that's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Quarter?
Mr. Mayor and council, as you know, at the last meeting, it was decided by council to ask the public for input regarding the naming or the renaming of the beach. There was some concern brought forward by citizens and then discussed with the council. Those results are before you. From the over 16,287 people reached on the Facebook metrics, 1,500 reactions or comments or shares, and about 9,500 post clicks on that one post. Out of that, 440 recommended changing it, 44 said to keep the name, one said change the name on part of the beach, and 106 said, you know, they were neutral or an unrelated statement or a no vote on this issue, that it didn't matter to them. So, with that said, and given the fact that Councilman Burrow, who suggested this being put forward to y'all for a poll, is not present, it's my recommendation that y'all take us under advisement and then let staff know when you would like to see it back up before you at some later date.
Well, I know Burrow's wanted to be here for that. You know, I think he had some comments he wanted to make, so I don't have a problem. I mean, am I correct when I say we don't have any, it's not really our vote changing?
No.
All right. I think Burrow should be present, if that's what he wants, so I don't have any problem with that. You guys, okay?
Okay.
All right. We'll table it.
The second item I have for you is a discussion regarding the process of selection of council-appointed positions. I sent this to you in a memo, and basically what it says for public, so the public knows, it's staff recommendation to allow y'all as much time as possible to properly vet applicants for these council-appointed positions, especially when there's more than one person who's applying to serve on one of these appointed boards or commissions. So, we've provided for you the memo, the outlines, you know, you make the announcement, you ask for resumes, you post the notices multiple times across all the social media platforms and on the city's website. The council is provided with the resumes. After the closing date, council then recesses to a date certain. That's not a regular scheduled meeting to have these interviews. And then a selection is made at the following council meeting after you have those interviews. Just for example, with the upcoming Pascagoula School Board appointment, that would mean the dates for receiving resumes close on the 31st of January. You would receive them on the 5th, the first meeting of the month of February. You would recess then to a meeting between the next two meetings and then vote on that selection by the 19th of February. So if that's acceptable to you guys, we can kind of let those who apply know what to expect, and then also use as process going forward for all other future appointments so that the public knows who's applying and y'all have a chance to vet these applicants.
Frank, how many people have applied so far for each of those positions?
So far, for the school board position two, and then for the library commission, none.
Well, are we gonna need to start, if people are not gonna come help us, are we gonna need to go start soliciting?
Well, I mean, we've put it out on social media list, how many times? At least three. At least three, and plus it's on a rotation basis, plus it's on the city's website. We've done all we can.
Want to be on the library board?
Make a note of it, so.
It just kills me that there's so many comments about what we need to do for the city, but we have zero people that wants to step up to the plate and volunteer to help. So, if you're out there in Facebook land, volunteer to be on one of these boards, please. We need you.
But if you guys are okay with that kind of schedule, we can run from there, and then we can definitely recommend recessing at certain times for these interviews.
Did you say we would be meeting on February the 5th?
That's your regular scheduled meeting.
Oh, I know it is, but.
It's also Mardi Gras.
Well, I'm gonna be out of town, so I didn't know.
March, sorry. Mardi Gras is March.
Mardi Gras is March.
Okay. Well, I'm.
We'll meet that day too, by the way.
Okay, so.
Sorry.
Do you want a motion on this?
No, just to kind of head nod, to make sure you're okay with this, so we can tell people who are applying what to expect.
Yeah, I think that gives a reasonable balance of time, so.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
And the interviews will be public?
That's correct.
Anybody who wants to come? Okay.
That's correct.
All right. So, next is Ms. Turner, city engineer.
Yes, I think you kind of got a heads up what we wanted to discuss tonight, but as a little bit of background for everybody, we're essentially finished with all initial planned phases of the promenade. And there were some funding left over in the BP and RDA grant specifically for amenities that didn't get placed. We had some initial, some larger scale things planned along the linear portion that the residents did not appreciate, and we backed up and changed plans. We've built everything that was in the construction plans. And the DEQ is incredibly impressed and favorable about the way that this project has progressed. We've gotten the product that they hoped to see. And so they, at our last meeting, we approved an extension to the grant to allow us to use what funding is left. Until we do a final accounting of the last little dollars and cents, we're not 100% certain on the exact amount, but it's somewhere between $60,000 and $70,000 is available for amenities. So just kind of as background, the area marked here on the map is the extent of where the funding could be used. That's the primary restriction. We can't go any further east, essentially into the old beach, and we can't go west into the point, although we do have some tidlance funds that we're gonna be looking at using there soon. So that's the basic extent. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The, we talked about repairing the piers at the point. Is that, am I correct to say that that's where the tidlance funds that we have coming are gonna go?
There are, we have tidlance funds each year, and I believe some of that is programmed for the pier, some is for parking.
So it's on your radar to get all those fixed?
Correct.
Okay.
So, and then this slide here is kind of meant as a way to start discussion. We're hoping to get some feedback from all of you, if any of these ideas are things that you'd like to pursue, or if you have other ones. These are not necessarily meant to be recommendations. The blue line on the left is about the limit of where we can use this funds, these funds, this is all down at the point area. But some of the things that were suggested, you can see there's some golf cart, parallel parking, some landscaping at the top that could ultimately provide shade, potentially another fire pit in the back if the one in the front turns out to be used regularly, maybe some shade over the stage, some grills. And then one thing we kind of tossed around is towards the entrance of the park, either doing some kind of arched iron entry gate. And the one concern we have with that is any kind of height restrictions with boats or any appurtenances on boats. And so another thing that was kind of tossed around, which is my personal favorite, but I don't want to get to set the policy, is something, as you're going into the park there on the left, that would be flagpole-sized, mimic a ship's mast, have like banners and signs on it, welcome to Point Park. It would be off to the side where there's no height issues. It would have the whole nautical theme. We could put signs on it that indicate directions to various things and how far. Ben's come up with a lot of these suggestions and can answer questions, but his thought was, a lot of times when you start out at a place like this and you want to go for a run, you want to know, am I getting two miles in, three miles in, five miles in, if I get to this point and back? So some of that kind of informational stuff on a flagpole sign seemed positive. We could also buy more banners to rotate through the flagpoles. So those are some ideas, and like I said, we were hoping to give you a couple days to think about it, see if y'all had any other ideas you wanted to suggest, and see if we could come up to a solution today so that we can move forward, because we do just have till April to spend the money.
Jackie, I got a question. I've asked about trash receptacles several times. I think I've been told in the past that they're on order, but those rolling things that are out there, in my mind, needs to be replaced and something more decorative like we have downtown, black, you know, something along those lines. I mean, are there trash receptacles on order, or could this be used for those?
I'll have to follow up. I'll have to follow up and find out for sure if we do or not.
Yeah, because it is nice down there, and to me, those trash cans just destroy the whole look when you're.
I agree.
You know what? Along those lines, if you're gonna go with the ship's mast and all that kind of thing, we went, we visited, oh, I'm gonna call it Jones Beach in New York, when we took Jack to school. And they have the greatest trash cans ever, and it fits so well because Ingles is right across the way. They, the, and I've got pictures of them.
I'd like to see.
They sit the trash cans down in it. It's the big, like on the ships, god, I don't know what they're called.
Like the portals?
The big round thing, yeah. So the trash can fits perfectly down in it. It's hidden. And any overflow trash goes in it, so it's not flying all over the place, which happens all the time at the point. And it's fitting because of Ingles being right there.
Yeah, if you have any pictures, I'd love to see that.
I did.
And if that's something we're interested in, if you'll send me pictures of it, and as best you can remember where it was, we can maybe find out exactly how to.
I'm telling you, it's Jones Beach.
Jones Beach.
In New York.
Well, you've heard me say this time and time again, and I came up with, we sit down and had some meetings, and I think this deficit that we got was interfered with that. But we sat down with Waste Pro, they agreed to help us. We sat down with Main Street, they agreed to help us. That's the only two I know, because we looked at the cost of that, it was about 20 grand. So, I want to revisit, I want to look at her ideas, come up with that. You spend millions of dollars out there on the beach, and then you have Waste Pro rolling cans all over and stuff, so it's just, that's low-hanging fruit to me, and it irritates me every time I drive down there. But I would like to pick this back up and run with it.
Jackie.
And so, Mr. City Manager, if we could have meetings with those guys again and see if their commitments are still there. And then if you can use a little bit of that leftover to help fix that, I think that would add a lot of value by keeping it clean and certainly by the aesthetic.
We'll share around that picture there and see if we can find where they got it, or if that's something they manufactured, and see if everybody likes that. But I can't imagine we would spend, I mean, if Waste Pro was talking 20,000, then we'd still have 40 to 50 more.
No, Waste Pro said they would contribute to the 20,000. They didn't commit 20,000.
No, no, I'm saying if that's what we thought the cost would be, was 20, that they would help with.
That's what the price we got, 20,000.
So we still, yeah, so we still would, even if they didn't.
Right.
We'd still have 40 to 50 more, potentially more than that to spend. Does everybody like the idea of a main entry sign, or do you like some of the other ideas, or do you like something different?
No arch.
I don't like the arch, simply because I can just imagine what's gonna happen to that, and how much that'll cost us to repair the flybridge up one of those.
I don't like the arch. I like your idea of the mast.
The, when the property was private before, they used to have a flagpole out there that was a ship's mast that they hung a flag on, and I just, I really loved that. So I like the idea of doing something a little bigger, more substantial, and being able to put directional signs off of it.
Okay. Well, getting those, and by the way, anytime you put in all these projects, golf cart, parallel parking, or parking period, I'm gonna be a fan of it. So if you can get those items to us, we'll take a look at it.
Now, with that one, unless we're talking about just striping, I don't know that we could do that before April, but we can certainly look at incorporating it into tidlance programming, also if that means pulling out paving and stuff in that amount of time, but we'll definitely incorporate that.
You know how I feel about it, and where the points are that I want it done.
Let me ask this question to kind of short-circuit or speed this long. Is there anything existing on here right now, the screen that you have in front of you, that you're not interested in?
And the reason why I say that is because those can be removed. We don't have to spend time on looking potentially what that would cost. I mean, if your priority is the shade structure over the amphitheater stage, if someone's playing a band down there, we can get into that pretty quickly. Landscaping, is there anything y'all, absolutely you're not interested on that?
I mean, I've got the trash receptacles, and I have a more ornate entrance, but is there anything else?
I don't have an issue with any one of them. My preference would be to get those garbage cans, that would be the number one.
Yeah, and I like the idea of the landscaping along the top for, once we start having events out there for shade. So it's, I don't know, put that in details, but.
Well, and what we're gonna, the next steps for us.
Yeah.
And the next steps for us is to take whatever ideas that come from this discussion and start pricing them out in order, and we're gonna really need to go ahead and move through these and get quotes and get things done in order to have it done, purchased, and paid for by April. So what I'm hearing so far is in order of priority, you're looking at trash receptacles, hopefully something suiting in the nautical realm there, some kind of entry sign that's not an archway, and then shade at the top of the hill?
Yeah.
Any other ideas you want us to pursue or not pursue?
I actually just sent you a couple of more pictures.
I like those. That's fine.
I think I sent these to somebody whenever we got back from there, but they were.
It was me.
Concrete, cornhole. If we're gonna put grills down there, that's the only reason I'm thinking of it. Concrete, cornhole, structures. They just stay there. And then there were bati ball courts that were made from sand. I sent you a picture of both of them.
You say there's additional fire pit down here. Where's the first fire pit?
Circle right above the over.
There's a pointer, but it doesn't work on the TV. But anyway, that little circle that comes off, the little, the yellow dot where it says new monument sign, if you go just to the left of that, that circle that comes off there is a concrete fire pit with bench around it, and that's what it's designed for.
Okay. All right. So there's your priorities, and let's look at them when you get them back.
And while we're on the subject, just a split second, I think this is something that we could really celebrate, in case not everybody's familiar with all the pieces. That is completely open at this point. People can walk through it and everything, and I think we're gonna try to do some kind of ribbon cutting when we get all the amenities finished. The blue line by the beach is actually an ADA mat that allows people in wheelchairs access to the beach. That's removable or movable. We've got the shade structure with picnic tables up in the top corner. You can't really see the picnic tables there, but they're there. We do have the fire pit, that hill's there. That seated, that's tiered seating going up the hill there, so you can fit a large number of people at the amphitheater with the full stage, and then that does circle back around to the point. So, we've really added a lot of really fantastic things there. If you haven't had a chance to go look at it, I'd really encourage it. It's quite beautiful. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, claims docket. Is there a motion to approve the docket?
So move.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay. Next is mayor council items, number, anybody got anything besides a meat? Okay. So what I want to do is take this opportunity to explain our legislative trip up to Jackson. I hear we get a lot of flack over that. I guess there's a misunderstanding of exactly how that was supposed to work. We go up there, produce it. We opted for the one where we bring it back to you guys and you vote on it, not us. However, since everybody got in an uproar, we're gonna pull it off and take the 1% tax off of our legislative discussion. That's, like I said, is just, that was just an option to have in our toolbox where you guys would have to vote on that, and it wouldn't be just anything we pass. Having said that, I'm gonna make a motion that we withdraw that off our legislative agenda, because the council voted on it, so I'm gonna make a motion that we withdraw the 1% sales tax option off of our legislative agenda so that that's not hanging out there.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, the second one, the hotel motel tax, we are gonna leave it on there because it doesn't affect our citizens unless you go stay in a motel. That was, 72% of the people voted on that before. Because of a legislative issue, it fell through and went out. We're gonna put it back on there. All that means is you're gonna have an opportunity to vote. We are not passing a tax. We're giving you the option to do that. It does not mean anything other than you will have the option. It does not mean anything other than you will have the option to vote whether to have the hotel motel tax. So please don't get out there and start ripping us up for taxing you when we're not taxing you. Just simply gonna vote on it. All right, so, having said that, if there's nobody else...
Well, maybe, maybe we ought to say, in conjunction with that, that that hotel motel tax is gonna be what pays back those rent bonds.
Yep.
And is going to reduce our property taxes, so that we can take off those increases that we had to put in place. So, we would really like to get behind that hotel motel tax, so that we can reduce those taxes that we had to put in place.
Yeah.
Because we'd like to see those go away.
Yep. Yep, I think everybody's okay. Well, I mean, pretty much everybody's, like I said, it passed 72% last time, so probably got a large group of folks that wouldn't mind having that pay off, that rent bond. Having said that, has anyone signed up? No one signed up to address council, did they? All right, so, thank you for your attention. Now, we're gonna entertain a motion to close session, so we determine the need for an executive session. Do I have that? All right. Go up a second. No, I don't need a second. Yeah, they need a second. All right, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so, thank you for attending tonight.
There was no action taken in executive session?
There was no action taken in executive session.
That's what I said.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All right, second. Yep. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay.